Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to tonight's city council meeting and committee of the whole meeting. Tonight's council meeting is called to order, and I kindly ask our city clerk to please take the roll call.
Bruno.
Here.
Burkhardt.
Here.
Ruby.
Here.
Caven.
Here.
Kilburg.
Here.
Casarag.
Here.
Maladra.
Here.
Marx.
Here.
Mayor is out. Swanson.
Here.
Ladies and gentlemen, we begin our city council meetings with the pledge of allegiance, and there is no one better to ask us to lead the pledge than our birthday girl, City Administrator Stephanie Dawkins.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A very happy birthday, City Administrator Dawkins.
Twenty-five.
Council members, if you have not yet seen and wish to see on your way out this evening, Stephanie's office has been, what was it, aggressively decorated? Courtesy of the Assistant City Administrator, Mr. McCready, and Executive Assistant Fenari. So, it's quite the show. Probably a violation of the fire code, too.
No candles.
No candles. Item 3A, consider approval of special event application for the Concorde Elegance, including a request for use of public right-of-way and city services on Sunday, August 22, 2021.
So moved.
Alderman Bruno makes the motion to approve.
Second.
Alderman Swanson makes the motion, seconds the motion to approve. Forgive me. Anything you'd like to bring up, Stephanie?
Oh, no, again, this is, well, an annual event again, right? So, it's scheduled to take place on Sunday, August 22. They expect about 160 to 180 participants and 10,000 attendees, and the event is free and open to the public with a request for a donation to benefit the Living Well Cancer Resource Center. All of the details are in your agenda packet. We do have Director Tim Mishenko here this evening, as well as Pat Barrett, the applicant. So, that's all I've got.
Ladies and gentlemen, Pat and I were speaking earlier regarding the excitement of this year's event in light of last year's, obviously, postponement. So, it's gonna be a great day, and I believe the record is it's only rained twice...
In seventeen years.
In seventeen years, so no rain on the 22nd.
Yeah, so, and we had it anyway, so.
Anything you'd like to share, folks, or...
I'd like to tell you about the features this year.
Oh, please do, that'd be great. Are the genuine wood-simulated minivans gonna be part of the...
They are. They're gonna be in a parking lot down over here.
Thank you, thank you very much.
We have five features this year. Duesenberg is the first one. The Duesenberg Company is 100, it actually was 100 years old last year, but those, our features are carrying over from last year since we weren't able to hold the event. We're gonna give this a little more international flair. We're gonna have a company called Citron, which is not Swedish, it's French.
Is it C-E-T-R-O-N?
It's C-I-T-R-O-E-N.
Ah, okay. I thought, how, what a small world.
With the umlaut, yeah.
Yeah, it does sound like that, doesn't it?
Yes.
The Chevrolet Corvair was 60 years old last year, so that's another feature.
Now, Pat, let me interrupt. The Corvair, was that not made famous by none other than...
Yes, it was.
Okay. Unsafe at Any Speed was the book written about the Corvair.
It was, that was a very contentious time for the company and those issues. Cars of the Chicago area, there are a lot of manufacturers in the Chicago area through time. All of, almost all of them are gone. There's a few left, so we looked around and we tried to find as many old cars as we could that were manufactured by companies from Chicago areas, so that should be interesting. And the fifth feature is Ford. Ford went through the alphabet twice. It's not commonly known. We all associate Model Ts and Model As. We know the Model Ts, they seem to be the first cars that they built, but it's not really true. In 1903, Ford started with the Model A, and they went through the alphabet, and about 1915, they got to the, it'd be more like 1912, they got to the Model T, and the Model T went up through 1927, and then they started over again with the alphabet with the Model A. So, we have, we think we have one of each of the letters coming, those earlier letters, and that should be very interesting to see, too. That's, that's the entire list of features for the year.
If I may, and obviously, I know you're aware, but was not Naperville home to a couple car manufacturers, because they have the test track there?
Um...
Or is that incorrect?
Not that I've heard of.
Okay.
Elgin.
Elgin.
Elgin was Evanston, Elgin, Chicago, of course...
What was made in Elgin?
The Elgin.
Oh, really?
Yes. There were some executives from the Elgin Watch Company that went into the business of making cars, and they, they made them, some of them they made in Elgin, and some of them they made in another part of the country. We weren't able to find one, unfortunately.
Elgin. They took forever to wind. They had to wind it up to...
Yeah. Had a really big, mean spring.
Yeah. Well, that is so cool. Any comments or questions for our special guest?
It's always a fun time.
Kilburg. Could you refresh our memories a little bit, the history of this event and how it came to Geneva? And I think it's, it's good sometimes to review this a little bit. I think it's probably been, what, are we approaching 15 years?
No, it's 17 years, actually.
Seventeen years, okay.
It started quite small. The first event was in the parking lot at the courthouse, and it was very well-received, and the group who was involved at the time went on to do it another year, and then they wanted to get out of the business, and so we found another, actually, the city found a manager for us. And that group lasted about three years, and then it closed up, and we, we were always involved, we were always volunteering and helping, and it, it came to us to continue to put the event on. And it's become a, I won't say that it's international, but it's certainly very well-respected nationally. Very well-known. I hear, I hear a lot of great things all the time. People very interested in it.
Thank you.
And to Alderman Kilburg's point, where else is the Concorde held throughout the United States?
There are a lot of them, actually. The biggest ones are on the west coast, it's Pebble Beach, which is always the weekend before our event, and it's Pebble Beach, California. And the, the other one that's a really big name is Amelia Island. That one's held in the winter, usually in April or March, and that's a very well-known also. There, there are others around, but they're, they're not as well-known as those two.
That's pretty cool. Alderman Bruno.
So, for the, are those concourses affiliated, or do you just happen to have the same name, or are there standards that must be maintained?
Well, the history of a Concorde, Concorde Elegance is, it's a Contest of Excellence, that's the translation, and they were started in the early years of automobiles, and it was, it was sort of a, kind of a hoity-toity, high-end kind of thing. It was people getting together with their, with their very expensive cars and then having a, having them judged, and it's evolved from that.
So, there's no, there's no oversight?
No, no, there's no affiliation amongst the various groups at all.
Well, you do a fabulous job.
There are lots of clubs, there are a lot of clubs that are associated with them, but they're associated with all of them.
Thanks.
We do have a motion, ladies and gentlemen, and we have a second. Voice vote is sufficient. All in favor of approving the request under item 3A, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Again, congratulations. Happy 17.
Thank you. Thank you all.
We'll see you there.
Thank you.
Item 3B, ladies and gentlemen, consider approval of a special event application for Fox Valley Marathon, including a request for the use of public right-of-way and city services on Sunday, September 19, 2021.
So moved.
Alderman Kilburg makes the motion.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Casarag. Ms. Dawkins, anything to add?
Again, similarly, this is the 12th year of the Fox Valley Marathon. The race actually begins and ends in St. Charles, however, two, miles two through five of the 26-mile event showcases downtown Geneva. This year's course has been tailored to avoid conflicts with some of our construction projects, and then also note that the Illinois Department of Transportation requires the city to submit a parade resolution, and that resolution is coming later in the agenda, so assuming this gets approved, then later in the agenda, you'll see where that resolution is. So, this evening, we have, again, Director Tim Mishenko here, and I'm not sure, is Craig Bixler here?
Uh-huh.
So, and we also have the applicant here as well.
Craig, if I can come up and say hello?
Absolutely.
Twelve years, huh?
Twelve years.
I almost said 12 years in running, but that'd be unusually obnoxious, but yeah.
It's amazing how fast 12 years has gone by, and, and I want to thank the City of Geneva and council for letting us bring people from around the country. Typically, we have 35 states or so.
No kidding.
Typically, five, runners from five foreign countries, Mexico, Canada always, and then scattering depending on, depending on the year.
Wow.
And especially this year, we're just looking, last year was a tough year.
Indeed.
For us, for hotels, for restaurants, we're looking forward to bringing people back to the area and helping everyone get back on their feet again.
And how many total runners do you expect?
We got, we got a slow start this year, obviously. November, December, January, February, people were tired of signing up for things that didn't happen, so they didn't sign up. So, we're trying to, trying to catch, play a little catch-up now. Typically, it's 2,500 to 3,000 each year. This year, we're hoping to get 2,000-plus, so kind of a transition year, and then, then hopefully, next year, right back up to the 2,800, 2,900, so.
The council this year is gonna have a relay team.
Are they aware of that yet?
That's later on the agenda.
Twenty-five in the morning.
That's later on the agenda, so. Any questions or comments for our friend Craig? Alderman Kilburg, sir.
I know in the past, this is really a charitable event. I mean, you, you raise funds, I know, and a portion of your proceeds is designated to a number of charities, I think primarily here in the Fox Valley. Could you share some of the history of that, and maybe, have you designated who those charities are gonna, that are gonna benefit this year, or might be?
Absolutely. We have two phases to the charity program. We need many volunteers. Typically, 800 or so volunteers come out and help us put this event on, guide the runners through the streets, in Race Village, Packet Pickup, everything. Part of our charity program is giving donations to groups, and they don't have to be charities, groups come and volunteer to take on some of those tasks, and in return, we give a donation to whatever charity they designate. So, sometimes it's the charities themselves that form a group, sometimes it's just a group from a neighborhood that wants to donate to a cause that they believe in. So, that's a piece of the program. And then the other piece, again, is, is a little unique. We don't donate directly to charities, but we give, we give discounts and perks to charities that then can offer them to runners, and then those runners fundraise directly for the charities, and that is open to any charity that applies. We just have them apply. We do some due diligence to make sure the money's going to recipients and not into the pockets of the leaders of a charity. We don't want to mislead our runners and think, you know, they're donating to a charity by, by running, and then all of a sudden, it's not really going to people. So, that's open to any that apply this year. Again, I think slow start, transition year for some of the charities, too. So, we have three this year. Canlin Arts Initiative is a youth program that gets kids into the arts. Cal's Angels does incredible work for kids with cancer and families. And then we have a new one, Trailhead Project, this year, that does some things like Rails to Trails kind of stuff. But again, we are open to any. We've had a variety in the past and hope that once everyone gets through what we've been through the past year, that, that they'll jump back in both feet, and we can grow that program. This year, we'll have our first in-person 5K. In the past, it's always been 13 miles, 20 miles, 26 miles. We're introducing a 5K in person this year. Last year, we tried it, but it ended up being virtual. What we have seen in a similar event in Naperville is when we introduced the 5K, the charities just boomed. It's hard to find people to run 13 miles. Anyone can walk for an hour, which is a 5K, so they, their pool of potential donors grew incredibly, and that's exactly what we hope happens here. So, it's, it's a big part of the event, it's, it's our way of giving back. We want everyone to win out of this, and that's certainly a way that local charities, local recipients can win. So, we're, we're happy that they help us, they, they do the charity part, we put on the race, so we're happy that they're helping us meet one of our goals. Thank you.
Anyone else in the dais? We have a motion by Alderman Kilburg, a second by Alderman Casarag, to approve item 3B. Voice vote is sufficient. All in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Please say nay. Congratulations, and good luck.
Thank you.
Item four, folks, amendments to the agenda. Are there any amendments this evening by any member of the council? Item five is the omnibus agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine by this council, and those items can be considered and acted upon with one motion. Is there such a motion? Alderman Marx makes that motion.
Second.
And Alderwoman Burghart makes the second. Questions or comments? If not, Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Burkhardt.
Aye.
Ruby.
Aye.
Caven.
Aye.
Kilburg.
Aye.
Casarag.
Aye.
Maladra.
Aye.
Marx.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Bruno.
Aye.
Burkhardt.
Aye.
Aye.
With nine votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and one absent, the omnibus agenda has been adopted. We jump to item 10, folks, municipal bills for payment. We kindly ask our city clerk to read the bills in their aggregate for our consideration.
Total bills are $3,799,499.33. Mayor, I move that we approve and pay the bills as read. The individual items that add up to that amount could be found in tonight's city council packet on the city website.
Alderman Bruno makes the motion to pay the bills as presented, which are available on the city's website and in each council member's packet. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Casarag. Any questions regarding the bills? Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Ruby.
Aye.
Caven.
Aye.
Kilburg.
Aye.
Casarag.
Aye.
Maladra.
Aye.
Marx.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Bruno.
Aye.
Burkhardt.
Aye.
With a vote of nine in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and one absent, the bills have been approved for payment, and will be paid within the next couple of years, Committee of the whole, items of business are all under consent. Presentations and ordinances, item 12A, consider ordinance number 2021-11 granting variations to decrease the allowable side yard setback from six feet to three feet, and to increase the allowable lot coverage from 40% to 45% for the purpose of replacing an existing deck at the property located at 801 Center Street. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Bruno?
Second.
Seconded by Alderwoman Burghart. Any additional information, Ms. Dawkins?
There's not much, but I'll just give a little bit. So, the subject property is located at the northwest corner of Center Street and Richard Street. The applicant would like to demolish and reconstruct an existing deck located in the side yard. The existing deck has been there for over 40 years and is currently a non-conforming structure because it extends into the required, required side yard setback. As was stated in the motion, they, again, they're asking for two variations, one to decrease the side yard setback from six feet to three feet, and to increase the maximum lot coverage from 40% to 45%. The Planning and Zoning Commission met on July 8, and the commission unanimously recommended approval of the requested variations. I have Director DeGroot here, and I also have the applicant present this evening, so if you have any additional questions.
Any questions or comments from the dais? Alderwoman Ruby.
Thank you. So, I understand we're just replacing an existing structure with the identical structure. I assume that's why PZZ unanimously approved it. I'm just curious if we ever use this situation as an opportunity to have the new construction fit to our code? Is that something that comes up often?
Yes, I think we do. I think that's why the code's constructed the way it is. The non-conforming provisions allow you to maintain and do ordinary repairs to a non-conforming structure, but if you're going to completely remove it, as is the case here, it's supposed to be brought up to city code unless a variation is granted. So, that's why they've requested the variations, is to replace the existing condition that's been there for 40 years.
Right, and I understand it would be tiny if it were to conform to our current standards. I was just curious, just in, in reading it, my initial thought was, you know, wow, I would have really liked an extra three feet on my dock, but I understand this is a different situation, so I, I just, that's it. I just was curious to find out more about it. Thank you.
Anyone else in the dais? We have a motion by Alderman Bruno, a second by Alderwoman Burghart. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll call.
Caven.
Aye.
Kilburg.
Aye.
Casarag.
Aye.
Maladra.
Aye.
Marx.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Bruno.
Aye.
Burkhardt.
Aye.
Ruby.
Aye.
Caven.
Aye.
Kilburg.
Aye.
With a vote of nine in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and one absent, item 12B, folks, consider resolution number 2021-60, requesting closure of traffic lanes on Illinois State Route 31 and 38 for the Fox Valley Marathon on September 19, 2021. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Alderman Marx makes the motion.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Caven. I believe this is self-explanatory, based on the information provided earlier and our comments from our friend Craig. Any questions from the dais? All traffic will be routed in the small print right past Swanson's house, it says here, so. It's gonna be a tough one. Mr. Clerk, whenever you're ready, sir, please take the roll call.
Kilburg.
Aye.
Casarag.
Aye.
Maladra.
Aye.
Marx.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Bruno.
Aye.
Burkhardt.
Aye.
Ruby.
Aye.
Caven.
Aye.
Kilburg.
Aye.
Casarag.
Aye.
Maladra.
Aye.
Marx.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Bruno.
Aye.
Burkhardt.
Aye.
Ruby.
Aye.
Caven.
Aye.
Kilburg.
Aye.
Casarag.
Aye.
Maladra.
Aye.
My apologies, folks, we could've done that voice vote.
I was under the impression there was someone remote, so I apologize, but that is a nine in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and one absent. We are adjourned. We'll take one minute to transition over to the committee of the whole meeting. Microphones are off. Ladies and gentlemen, our committee of the whole meeting is called to order. Let the record show that all the committee members are present, save for Alderman Mayor, who is enjoying a nice vacation. With that, we will commence. Item two, approve the minutes from the July 6, 2021 committee of the whole meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Alderman Bruno makes the motion.
Second.
Ooh. Alderman Swanson gets the second on that one. Fair, do you concede?
Yeah.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop right there. All in favor of approving the minutes, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The minutes have been approved. Item 3A, consider draft resolution authorizing the purchase of a sanitary and storm sewer televising equipment from Jet Vac Environmental in an amount not to exceed $80,011. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Alderman Bruno makes the motion.
Second.
Alderwoman Burghart makes the second. Ms. Dawkins?
Okay, so for the committee's consideration, as stated, is the purchase of a camera system used for televising sanitary and storm sewers. Video information is used to evaluate the condition of the sewers, which is an invaluable tool for assessing underground infrastructure. The current system is 10 years old and requires frequent costly repairs to keep in operation. As such, staff is recommending using the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Program for the purchase, and we do have Superintendent Van Gescam online if there are any additional questions.
Any questions or comments from the committee for Superintendent Van Gescam, who's joining us by phone? Alderman Bruno, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, and this would be for Mr. Van Gescam. Are there, are there any new features, bells, whistles, cool things with the new equipment?
No, I don't believe so. We're gonna, you know, it'll come with its own software package, but no, I, nothing unusual or new.
Okay.
I'll leave it at that.
Thanks.
So, it's not Mr. Van Gescam with a GoPro? Just, of course, very, exactly. Anyone else? We have a motion by Bruno, a second by... Motion by Alderman Marks?
Second.
Seconded by Alderwoman Burghart. Ms. Dawkins?
Sure. So this is essentially housekeeping. You may or may not know, in May of 2019, MB Financial, which was the bank used by the city, merged with Fifth Third. During the transition, Fifth Third did not request any updated documents. However, now that we have a new treasurer, they're asking that we do an updated resolution. So again, mostly housekeeping. It doesn't really change any of our banking practices or policies. But Director Cruz is available on the phone if you have any additional questions or through the portal.
Any questions for Director Cruz from the dais? Seeing none and anticipating none, Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Maladra.
Aye.
Marks.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Bruno.
Aye.
Burghart.
Aye.
Ruby.
Aye.
Cavan.
Aye.
Kilburg.
Aye.
With a vote of nine in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and one absent, item 12D has been approved. Folks, we're at the public comments and new business phase of the meeting. I will ask our assistant city administrator, Mr. McCready, any public comments this evening?
No one joining us this evening.
Anything for the record, Ms. Dawkins?
No, sir.
From the dais, new business. Greatest night ever. With that, ladies and gentlemen, I entertain a motion to adjourn the city council meeting. Alderman Marks makes that motion. A roll call vote is in order. Mr. Clerk, whenever you're ready.
Marks.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Bruno.
Aye.
Burghart.
Aye.
Ruby.
Aye.
Cavan.
Aye.
Kilburg.
Aye.
With a vote of nine in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and one absent, item 12D has been approved. Folks, we're at the public comments and new business phase of the meeting. I will ask our assistant city administrator, Mr. McCready, any public comments this evening?
No one joining us this evening.
Anything for the record, Ms. Dawkins?
No, sir.
From the dais, new business. Greatest night ever. With that, ladies and gentlemen, I entertain a motion to adjourn the city council meeting. Alderman Marks makes that motion. A roll call vote is in order. Mr. Clerk, whenever you're ready.
Marks.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Bruno.
Aye.
Burghart.
Aye.
Ruby.
Aye.
Cavan.
Aye.
Kilburg.
Aye.
Casarag.
Aye.
Maladra.
Aye.
My apologies, folks. We could have done that voice vote. I was under the impression there were someone remote, so I apologize. But that is a nine in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and one absent. We are adjourned. We'll take one minute to transition over to the committee of the whole meeting. Microphones are off. Ladies and gentlemen, our committee of the whole meeting is called to order. Let the record show that all the committee members are present, save for Alderman Mayor, who is enjoying a nice vacation. With that, we will commence. Item two, approve the minutes from the July 6, 2021 committee of the whole meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Alderman Bruno makes the motion.
Second.
Ooh. Alderman Swanson gets the second on that one.
He's close.
Do you concede?
Yeah.
I'm going to stop right there. All in favor of approving the minutes, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The minutes have been approved. Item 3A, consider draft resolution authorizing the purchase of a sanitary and storm sewer televising equipment from Jet Vac Environmental in an amount not to exceed $80,011. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Alderman Bruno makes the motion.
Second.
Alderwoman Burghart makes the second. Ms. Dawkins?
Okay. So for the committee's consideration, as stated, is the purchase of a camera system used for televising sanitary and storm sewers. Video information is used to evaluate the condition of the sewers, which is an invaluable tool for assessing underground infrastructure. The current system is 10 years old and requires frequent costly repairs to keep in operation. As such, staff is recommending using the Sourcewell Cooperative purchasing program for the purchase. And we do have Superintendent Van Gescam online if there are any additional questions.
Any questions or comments from the committee for Superintendent Van Gescam, who's joining us by phone? Alderman Bruno, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. And this would be for Mr. Van Gescam. Are there any new features, bells, whistles, cool things with the new equipment?
No, I don't believe so. We're going to, you know, it'll come with its own software package. But no, nothing unusual or new.
Okay.
I'll leave it at that.
Thanks.
So it's not Mr. Van Gescam with a GoPro? Very... Exactly. Anyone else? We have a motion by Bruno, a second by Alderwoman Burghart. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion has been adopted and will be advanced to the city council for additional consideration. Item 12B, consider draft resolution authorizing execution of a professional services agreement with Stanley Consultants for a hosting capacity analysis in an amount not to exceed $39,700. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Casarag makes the motion.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Bruno. Ms. Dawkins?
Okay. So the hosting capacity analysis would determine the volume of cogeneration that can be hosted on the distribution system as configured and use the information for future upgrades. For your consideration, is a request to use Stanley Consultants to perform the analysis using City of Geneva data and engineering models and deliver to the City of Geneva a detailed hosting capacity per electric substation feeder. Staff does have the confidence and the ability of Stanley Consultants for this project as they have done consulting for the city's electric utility in the past. And we do have Superintendent Holton on the line for any additional questions.
Questions or comments for our friend Aaron Holton, the superintendent? Alderman Swanson?
Thank you, Mayor. Could you provide us with a brief synopsis of what exactly is going to be provided? What information we're going to be providing the consultants and what they're going to do with it? And then a second part of that would be, what would the information we're going to receive back be on an individual, each area, each feeder station? If you could just give us a brief overview.
Sure. So...
Mr. Holton? Mr. Holton, we're going to ask you to either speak loudly or perhaps closer to the unit you're using.
Okay. Is this any better?
Slightly.
How about now?
Yes, sir.
Is that better?
Much.
All right. So to answer Alderman Swanson's question, this is outlined in the Exhibit 1 of the proposal. So we're going to provide Stanley basically a detailed model of our system, and along with loading, the location and size of existing generation facilities, cogeneration facilities, and some other minutia as to what engineers need, things like competences and so on and so forth. They're going to take that and run that through their software and their calculations. They're going to be looking at things like total reverse power flow, high and low voltage instances, contribution to these units to short circuit events, the maximum loading of the conductors and equipment in the field, and we're also looking at voltage flickers. So what we're really concerned about here is how much solar can we put on the system, or any net generation for that matter? Can we put on the system to prevent power quality and safety issues to the customers? So right now, it's just kind of our best guess. We have this 2% cap. Nobody's real sure where that 2% came from. It could all be in one spot. It could be spread out all the way across the city. So the goal of this study is to give us the information to see how much load, how much net generation, we could put on each individual feeder. And so they're going to deliver to us essentially that information. Okay, you can support, you know, 2,000 KVA of generation on feeder one out of Kessinger, for example, or, you know, whatever the case may be. So it'll give us more fine-grained data. So one, we can go about planning for more solar generation out on the system, and also if we need to do any upgrades to be able to host more, we'll be able to use this information for planning purposes in the future.
Okay. Thank you. So that would be very helpful, so that we're not turning away potential solar installations that are in a particular feeder area. I guess the other issue that I had with this proposal is typically, a professional services proposal gives the amount of hours being performed by staff level, and this one did not. It gave the staff pay grades, if you will, and then a total. Is there any reason why they didn't provide a detailed breakout of what staff is going to be working on to make up the $39,700?
I... You know, they didn't cite a specific reason. If you would like, I can ask them for a detailed breakdown of that amount and provide it before the city council meeting. I don't think that should be an issue.
That would be helpful for me, particularly because occasionally, we have these professional service agreements come before us. They're a not-to-exceed amount, and there are overruns. And I think it would be very difficult for us to ascertain what the reason was for the overrun, or whether or not the overrun is reasonable for us to authorize an additional payment. So without that information, I don't feel I have enough information to approve it as presented tonight.
Okay. Well, I will get in touch with Stanley and have them provide a schedule of fees that may make up the not-to-exceed amount.
Thank you. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? On this item, ladies and gentlemen, we're ready for a roll call vote. Kindly ask our city clerk to please take the roll.
Marks.
Aye.
Swanson.
Nay.
Bruno.
Aye.
Burghart.
Aye.
Ruby.
Aye.
Cavan.
Aye.
Kilburg.
Aye.
Casarag.
Aye.
Maladra.
Aye.
Marks.
Aye.
With a vote of nine in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and one absent, item 3C has been approved and will be advanced to the city council for additional consideration. We're down to item four, folks, public comments. Mr. McCready, anyone wishing to address the council, or, excuse me, committee?
No one joining us this evening.
Anything for the record, Ms. Dawkins?
No, sir.
New business by any member of the committee? A motion to adjourn would be in order. Alderwoman Burghart gets the call. All in favor of adjourning, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, folks. Thank you very much.